Forty. The next item on the agenda is a public comment on any items not on our agenda. Public comment, please.
Good afternoon. Audrey Miles, Anna Yates, pre-K teacher, pre-kender. First of all, Melanie, I would just like to thank you so much for your service to Emory Unified. The 14 years I've been here, you have been supportive and loving, and your message about being focused in on kids is a message that needs to resonate, to continue to resonate throughout the district, even when we get to our new site. You've always been supportive of teachers and staff, and we appreciate all the hard work. I know that whatever it is that you're going to do afterwards, you're going to take all those beautiful skills that you have accomplished and use them to continue some kind of public service somewhere, because I know that's you, okay? And I appreciate the mentoring that you provided me on my stint as a board member, because I modeled what I learned from our previous boards to become the board member that I was when I was a board member in West County, so I thank you for that. On a less lighter note, just addressing the board. The Friday before Thanksgiving, I wasn't there, but I did get emails in reference to certain behaviors that happened at the school. And it bothers me that where we are in our society now, that we're starting to get more and more incidents of violence in our communities, in our schools. And this is not something that hasn't, that just hasn't been recent. Throughout my time at Anna Yates, I've seen where parents have become angry and upset and violent, okay? But I've always felt like I was safe and supported. And when I heard the ugly messages that were said to a staff member of ours who just recently lost a family member, who was viciously attacked, both verbally and also who was threatened verbally on the phone, it really bothered me that while I know I can't tell an administrator or superintendent what to do, I just needed you to know how I felt as a family, as Anna Yates being my family, how that made me feel when I wasn't even here, okay? That somebody would hurt and attack Ms. McGruder in that manner when she just lost a family member. This is not the first time that this has happened at Anna Yates, where I've had to stand in front of a student when a parent was wanting to verbally attack a student, and we had to figure out ways to assist and help while another staff member went to go get somebody to help. So I'm starting to become, and that was like maybe last month, and there have been several other times where even Mr. LaBass was verbally attacked in front of the school site. I'm a little bit concerned that this is becoming something that's more of a regular basis, and I'm concerned that when we get to the new site, what things are in place for safety, because this is becoming more and more frequent where parents feel like it's okay to attack teachers and staff members, and that's not safe. And it resonated even more to me and brought tears to many of our staff members who really felt the pain that Ms. McGruder was going through. You know, when you would say something that ugly and then get back on the phone and call her back and say even uglier things and threaten her. And our comment is, it's like, what do we do about parents that are doing that? And why is that part, that person a part of our, still part of our community, our school community if you're attacking teachers? We don't feel safe. We've said that to each other just recently. We don't feel like enough is being done safety-wise to protect us when we're stuck in a verbal confrontation with a parent and there's nowhere for us to go. And you pick up the intercom or the walkie-talkie and nobody comes, because there's not enough people, because we're spread so thin. And these are the same conversations we had last year when we talked about safety issues, when we talked about having enough people on staff to support both the office staff and the teachers when there are problems. So I think sometimes I feel like, yes, I know we're in a budget crisis, but when we see stuff like this happening, when it's becoming more and more frequent that people are attacking and verbally and physically doing things to assault teachers, that we need to look at our safety policies and look at what we are putting in place for safety at our school site, because just today, 25 people were shot and killed. And that's getting scary. That's becoming something that's happening on a regular basis. And I don't see where we have any security where poor Ms. Parham and Ms. McGruder and Ms. Lang are stuck in the office and there's no one to help them if something goes down. So there, it's just not a difference between teachers and the certificated, but it's, there's no difference between whether it's classified staff or certified teachers. We are all a school community and we need to feel safe. And I get choked up about that, because it hurt me so bad to hear that somebody would verbally attack her the way they did. And I'm not the only one that feels that way, Dr. Rubio, you know? So we really feel like, we need to feel that you support us and we need to feel like we feel safe. We need to feel that, nobody told me to come do this. I just felt like I needed to say that. We need to feel like you support both your certified, your classified and your certificated teachers, where we feel safe that you support us when there's verbal and physical abuse against our staff, that something is done. We just really feel like we need to be supported. And right now, it doesn't feel like that. And I'm sure you, I can't, I'm not asking you to make any judgment. I was very careful not to say people's names, and I was very careful not to say anything else. I have more that I can say, but it hurts that we don't feel supported and don't feel safe.
I understand. President Affeldt, may I say one thing, just to respond?
Sure.
Ms. Miles, feel free to follow up with me. There's a lot that we did regarding the verbal interaction you're referring to. We gave a lot of support. I don't think it's always known, and we can't always communicate everything that we do, but we take it very seriously, and we've already taken legal action. Now, I have heard some staff, based on how a parent behaves, would like to see a student removed. We don't punish children, though, for the actions of their parents, so I can't. I know some people want that, and for some people, that's what they, they feel like, well, they're not being supported, because the child is still be there, is still in the school. But when a child is being a great student, we don't punish them for the parent's behavior. We take it very seriously, and you can feel free to follow up with me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. Any other public comment at this time?
Okay, I have no idea what Ms. Miles is talking about. It's the first I've heard of it, but I will say this. It seemed like she was referring to a general level of anxiety among the teachers and staff. And she made reference to a specific incident, but she also referenced, if I'm not mistaken, like just a general feeling of feeling unsafe. And I'd just like to say-
Talk into the mic, please.
General feeling of feeling unsafe. And I'd just like to say that that rises to, like, insofar that that's true, that the staff and the teachers feel that, that's sort of an existential challenge for this district. I mean, if you don't do anything, you have to assure safety. So I can't quantify what Ms. Miles is talking about. Pardon me. But I just, it's upsetting to me to hear that. And I'm not quite sure what the remedy, because I'm just a parent. But yeah, I think you should take this extremely seriously. Thank you very much.
Okay, any other public comment?
First of all, I'd like to apologize to Melody. I wasn't here earlier. I was on a conference call. But I do believe that I wanted to say something. My name is Juliet Dunn. I'm the wellness director for Emory Unified School District. I've been here 11 years. I've worked with Melody for 11 years. Up, down, in between, she's always been there. She's been a very calm person in a lot of storms. She's also put a lot of information out there and helped me and the wellness program develop to where we are at this point. And I just wanted to say several small things that maybe don't mean a lot to people, but they're what make, to me, someone very important to the students of Emory Unified School District, because I think that is, no matter what we agree on, what we disagree on, whether we like people, whether we don't like people, my whole purpose, and I think all of our purposes, should be those students. And I think she knows that, she believes that, and she has shown that in all of her activities, coming to the dance classes, being a part of samba, going to events that are here, being a part of the football games, the basketball games, and all the other things. Things that people don't say a lot about, but I know students appreciate. And I appreciate the fact that when wellness first started and there was nothing on the books, we didn't know anything, we couldn't figure out what we were going to do. We just, it was a blank slate. She was there helping us putting all that, put that information together. And I want to tell you personally that I appreciate it. I appreciate the support over the years, and I appreciate it for the students of Emory Unified School District, which you were once one.
Always am.
Always are. And again, I reiterate one more time, first dibs on your time.
Oh, no, we still got first dibs on our time. Any other public comment?
Uh-oh, I'm scared. Older sister scare me. Her voice is not really there. But my name is Wendy Walker. I am Melody's older sister, and I am very proud of you. And we all thank you for all you've done. I know my daughter thanks you. And my only wish is that without Melody, you guys continue to stay focused on the kids, not our personal agendas, and just be that safe place for families that we've always been. Me growing up in Emeryville, Melody growing up in Emeryville, and my daughter from preschool all the way up to Emory High. And now she is a sophomore at Tuskegee. So if we just continue to be focused on students, you can get through all the distractions and craziness. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, big sister.
Thank you. Any additional comment? Public comment at this time? Okay, that concludes our public comments on to reports. Do we have an ETA report? A CSEA report? Nope. A, I don't see our student representative here, so I don't appear to have a student representative report. And a superintendent report?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. I want to start my report by sharing some really good news. As many of you know, we're building a, thanks to board members and a lot of work over the years, like Ms. Dice, we're building a new full-service community center, K-12 school with the city for our community members, our parents, our students, and a full-service wraparound center, health center. And the good news I want to share today is that I received some emails congratulating us that I want to share. We did today sell about $4.5 million worth of bonds at a true interest cost of 3.75%. It was a very good day on the market for us to take action. And in addition, the refunding bonds, which have a shorter term and lower interest rates, sold at a true cost of 1.51%, generating approximately $170,000 in interest savings to taxpayers. I'll just read some of this from the emails for you. Both series of bonds were well-received by investors, and there was greater demand than, demand exceeded the supply that we were offering. Let me just continue here. The debt payment ratio, for those of you who are familiar with that, is calculated to be less than 1.85 to 1, which is well below the state requirement of 4 to 1. We also had representatives of the Alameda County Treasurer's Office who participated in the process today, and they concur that the pricing represented a very good outcome for the district. And we believe that it was in part due also to the very good credit rating the district has right now. So I wanted to share the good news. That additional action by the board for our, to complete our project is going to really help us get everything done, taken care of. So I wanted to share that good news first. An additional item I'd like to share is, it was brought to our attention, to my attention, between the last board meeting and this board meeting regarding one of my committee meetings, that we had a technical violation of the Brown Act. And I just want to say a couple of things about that to the community. One is, I know that I misunderstood one or two aspects, one in particular about the Brown Act, but I want to reassure everyone that, one, there was no action taken in that meeting. There was no intent to hide anything. What was discussed at the meeting, the data that was discussed was then brought out to the public. I had something wrong, and I'll make sure that going forward that we have it right. So there was no substantive ramifications of that, but there was a technical violation. I just want to be upfront about it. And again, letting you know that we will be correcting that, so it doesn't happen in the future. And that is the end of my report.
Okay. Now it's the time for the board president's report. Picking up on the superintendent's last point, I wanted to also address the matter that occurred prior to our board meeting on November 18th. Superintendent Rubio has noted it was a technical violation of the Brown Act to have a third board member be present to observe a superintendent's committee meeting on November 18th. We all regret this error. I'm sorry it happened on my watch. We will make sure that it does not happen again. Let me emphasize, there was no substantive consequence as a result of board member Marion's presence on November 18th. No actions were taken, no decisions were made. What is more, the information generated at the superintendent's committee meeting was immediately shared with the full board and the public at the board meeting that night. The only discussion by board members on November 18th as to whether to support the bond issuance was had in public at the full board meeting. The sole purpose of the superintendent's committee meeting was to update the list of known and potential outstanding ECCL construction costs. The board as a whole, when discussing the bond item at its prior public meeting, had requested that such a list be presented to the board at the meeting on November 18th. That this meeting occurred as it did was an honest mistake. I and the other board members present at the meeting relied on staff's understanding that it was not a violation of the Brown Act to have a third board member observe the meeting, but not participate. There is such a rule, but it did not apply in this instance. Staff were confusing the fact that additional board members are permitted to silently observe publicly noticed meetings of two-member committees of the board. This was a superintendent's committee meeting, however, and as such is not publicly noticed. In that case, the non-participation of the third board member does not prevent a quorum from being formed. As the superintendent has noted, the board will undertake additional training to refresh all of us on the Brown Act, most likely at our semi-annual retreat early next year. I appreciate member Patz informing us of the fact that he believed a Brown Act violation had occurred. I was wrong in my understanding at that time that it had not occurred. Yet Mr. Patz did more than convey that belief. On November 18th, he made very inflammatory claims about what occurred at the superintendent's committee meeting, asserting that board members intentionally used the meeting to act as a, quote, "cabal" to discuss and, quote, "predetermined" passage of the bond. And he did so without even first asking his fellow board members what had taken place. I take issue with anyone who's willing to make assertions with reckless disregard for whether they're true or not. When any person, much less a public official, makes an unfounded assertion, they sow confusion and undermine open and honest civic dialogue. We don't all have to agree, but we should all refrain from making unfounded accusations of intentional wrongdoing against each other. Now, it doesn't feel right to end it right there. It, on reflection, has occurred to me that Mr. Patz perhaps reacted in the manner he did because of a fundamental lack of trust of his fellow board members. And we may have different styles, we may have different personalities, we may have different objectives, but we are all on this board together, and we have to lead this district together. And to do that, we have to trust each other. So I'm going to propose that the board, at its retreat in the early part of the coming year, explore engaging some kind of intervention where we can work on the trust issues that currently exist, so that we can move forward together. We have many important items before us in the coming year, including addressing our composition between Anna Yates and ECCL and opening the ECCL facility. I look forward to continuing to work with all members of the board and the school community on these and other matters. Thank you. That concludes our board reports, and we are now on to our consent calendar.
A public comment on the board report, on the reports?
No, it's not a public comment item. Do we have any members willing to, or desirous of pulling off any items on the consent calendar?
I need to abstain from item two.
Okay, we can, let's pull off item two separately, then. Any other items to pull off? Do we have a motion for, to approve items, well, any motion you want, but on 7.1, 7.3, and 7.4?
I'll move, oh.
Public comment on 7.1. To Rubio? Public comment on 7.1?
I don't think we have public comment on consent items.
You could do it.
There has to be a public comment on consent.
Okay.
We can't vote without public comment.
I'll pull item 7.1.
Okay, item 7.1 has been pulled.
There's always public comment, really? You're going to ask if there's public comment on an item that we're voting on?
Well, I'm not taking any attitude with you, Mr. Patz.
My phone, please.
Well, Mr. Donahue, would you like to come and make your comment?
Yes, as long as you can.
It's time for you-
I'll hold it.
Okay, Ms. Dice has pulled 7.1, so you may comment on it. Just make your comment, please. Yes. And this is a comment on a warrant in item 7.1, right?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay.
So I have a child in this district, and my child is the most valuable thing to me in the world, to me and my wife. The most valuable, our baby is the most valuable thing to us in the world. And I've entrusted my child to this district, her welfare, her safety and her welfare and her well-being. I just wanted to say it's alarming to me when people that are in control of my daughter's existential being are not cognizant that it is unseemly for those persons to mix, like, contriteness with attacking of other people that they're so charged with running the schools. It makes me feel like the contriteness is not real. And if there's mistakes, insofar that mistakes are made or bad policy is promulgated, I want to know, I want to be assured. I don't want to be, feel uneasy that when the resolution comes, that there, insofar that there may be contriteness, somebody being contrite. I would like to feel like that's genuine. And I'm just not feeling that right now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comment on item one? Do we have a motion on item one?
I move approval of item 7.1.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. Why don't we just move to 7.2, since that was pulled by, excuse me. Member Ash? Any discussion of item 7.2? Your point was that you weren't-
I just have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Okay. Any public comment on item 7.2? All right, do we have a motion?
I'd move approval of item 7.2.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Abstain.
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. All right. No one has pulled either 7.3 or 7.4. Let me just double-check that I have now. This new system, Ms. Tamery, does not navigate as quickly as the old one. Okay, yes, I had no comments either. So do we have a motion on 7.3 and 7.4 together?
I'll move in note, it's very clean. Thank you. Item 7, 3, and 4, I'd move, I move approval of the two.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Dice?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
President Affeldt?
Yes. All right, now we're on to discussion action items. And our first item is a special ed department report. Superintendent, would you like to introduce?
Good evening again. The purpose of this item is to inform the board about updating us for any changes and updates from Ms. Karen Steele regarding our special education program and services. Ms. Steele, thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you for the opportunity to come a little bit earlier this year instead of at the end of the year and talk about what we did during the year. This time, I get to talk about what we're going to be doing during the course of the year and share a little bit of that with you and hopefully answer any questions that you might have. There's some- There's some resource information in the packet that you received. I'm not going to be going over that information. It's really just for a reference document about where we were and the changes that we made in terms of how our services are provided to students with disabilities. So currently, we're operating three learning centers to meet the needs of approximately 64 students with disabilities. And again, a learning center is basically a space, a learning space where all students can go to receive academic intervention. Some students receive other interventions in that learning space such as speech or occupational therapy, but more, more often, the focus is primarily on academics. And in terms of the approximately 64, 65 students that we continue to serve on average for the last four years, six students are co-enrolled in the Head Start program operated here at Ralph Hawley. Eighteen students are served at Emory Secondary. Four students are in out-of-district placements. That means they're placed in a neighboring district because they require a specialized program that we do not operate. And the remainder of those students, the other students, are served at Annie Yates. Ten of those are served primarily, excuse me, solely by the speech therapist. And then we have no students at this time, nor did we last year, placed in non-public schools. So compared to four years ago where we had three students in non-public school placements, we had 12 students in out-of-district placements. We've been able to, over the last several years, grow our program and build our own capacity to meet the needs of our students, and that truly is the purpose of this learning center model and what we're doing with our staffs at both sites. And when I say "our" staffs, I mean not just the special education teachers, but the general education teachers, the administrative staff, the office staff, and we have a couple of very valuable members in our audience this evening that I'm going to mention as we talk a little bit about our programs. So the preschool learning center, I've talked about that before. Again, it's a partnership with Head Start. We're halfway through our second year in that partnership, and as I've mentioned in the past, we used to send our preschool students to other districts. Albany, we'd put them in a cab and send these three and four-year-olds far, far away. And we don't do that anymore, and now their parents can actually drop them off here, walk to school with them. And the students are enrolled in the Head Start classroom along with other students that are here from 8:30 till noon, about 90 minutes of that time. Most of those students are, most of the students with disabilities are pulled out into the learning center where they receive specialized instruction to address pre-academic skills, but also social interaction, because some of the students have autism or severe communication disorders, and we actually have a couple of students who have trouble forming words, and so they're learning how to use communication devices to speak for them so they can communicate with their peers and with their teachers. And then those students spend the other additional two hours back in the Head Start classroom with special education support. So they're actually getting special education intensive instruction during their entire day, not just for a little piece of their day, but during their entire day. And so there's a variety of staff members that work with the Head Start teachers, consult with them, provide some training. In fact, earlier this week, I believe it was on, on Monday, there was a webcast that our speech therapist actually facilitated with the teachers here at Head Start on working with students with autism, just to help them understand a little bit more about why we do some of the things that we do, why we work on compliance, and why we work on following directions. And, and it's, it's a sensitive balance because the Head Start program has their own philosophy in terms of how they want their students to experience learning. So we've been, we've continued to work together to try to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our students in that particular setting. So again, we're serving six students right now in the learning center in the preschool. Last year, we served seven, and we, in the past, we've had anywhere from one to, one to seven students, a range every year of kids that age eligible for services. Zero students are being placed out of the district at that age. They're all being served now in their home district. The elementary learning center operation is basically kinder through, or TK through fourth grade, and new this year, we have a cohort of students that are kindergarten-age or TK-eligible. And what that means is some districts are, who don't have special day classes, are grouping their students based on needs into cohorts, and then they're developing the supports those students need, and they travel as a group, and the supports travel with them. So whether they're in the learning center receiving academic intervention, or speech, or OT, or if they're in the general education classroom, the supports that those students actually travel with them to the particular setting, and then out on the playground, or in the cafeteria, or the front office for pickup and drop-off by parents as well. So we have four students in that kinder cohort. Three students were in out-of-district placements last year, so they're back with us at Annie Yates. And they are a full part of the general education classroom, thanks to the extraordinary efforts of Audrey Miles, who's in the audience right now, who doesn't just tolerate kids being in her classroom, but she actually demands that they be in her classroom and be a full part of all of the activities that are going on, special projects, special activities. And I've been over many times to observe, and it's, it's amazing that students started in that classroom for 10 or 20% of their day, and most all of them now are spending half of their day in Ms. Miles' classroom, and then the other half of the day, with support, and then the other half of the day, they are in the learning center receiving really intensive instruction to help them communicate their needs, to help them learn letters, sounds, all the kinds of things that students with more significant needs like these four students have really need that individualized instruction in order to help them be successful when they are in her classroom. But it's a delight to see, and I invite you at any time to come over and view it, and I'd be happy to, to schedule a visit. So in terms of that particular program, it's going strong. We anticipate next year that there are, at this time, two students from the preschool that would be matriculating over to Annie Yates. So the cohort will expand to a K1 cohort. And so we're going to continue to expand that, and at some point, we might break that cohort apart into two, but it just depends on the number of students and the needs of those students and the staffing that's required in order to help them be successful. So you'll notice that I said they're kinder-age students, and yet Ms. Miles teaches the TK class, because that class was actually a better fit for these students in terms of their developmental level and the needs that they have, and she was able to accommodate them with all of the other wonderful children in her classroom at the same time. We also serve students kinder through fourth grade in that same learning center. So we have a classroom that we've tried to create classrooms within the classroom without making a segregated class or a restricted setting. So the class has like a big L shape in it, where students that read, that need the individualized instruction, they're on the other side of that L shape, but those students can easily walk around the end of that L and join one or two or three of the groups, or work in, in one of the independent workstations as well. It's a busy little place, but we've been able to grow our program with limited space. And that's going to be one of our challenges in the future, is if we're going to continue to serve all of our students, we have to make sure that we have adequate space to do that. So in addition to the preschool learning center and the elementary learning center, we also have one for intermediate and middle school students, and it operates much like a typical learning center would be. Students with any academic needs come to that particular center for all or a portion of their school day. This year, for the first time, we actually have a couple of students who spend the majority of their school day in the learning center. That means they're getting primarily most of their instruction from one of the education specialists, but they do go to the general education classroom for some of their day. They receive support when they're in that general education classroom, and that's because we had a couple of students come to our district that were in specialized settings in other districts or non-public schools, and this year, we were able to accommodate them at Annie Yates and meet their needs. And both of those students, one student in particular is spending most of his day in the general education classroom now and being successful, and the other student is, for the first time, not in a non-public school setting, and is actually out on the general education campus and being socially successful as well. So we're happy with that particular program, knowing that each time we have a student come with those kinds of needs, it presents a challenge to the staff in order to try to accommodate them without increasing our staffing. And that's been our goal all along, is to try to grow the skills and grow the program without unduly increasing staffing, but making sure that we have adequate resources to support the students. At the high school, we have a learning center as well. I've described it before, and that program is continuing as it has for the last couple, last several years. Again, we have a special education teacher assigned to the English strand. That means that teacher is in all of the English classes, 9, 10, 11, 12, that students with disabilities are in. Excuse me. And then we also have a teacher assigned to the math classes, and it's only the classes that students with IEPs would be in, so again, the algebra, the geometry. We did lose one of our great special education teachers, but we lost him in a great way. He became one of the upper division math teachers. And so he is actually in his classroom teaching side-by-side curriculum for students that have significant learning disabilities, and he's accommodating them right in his classroom. So he's doing all the things for the students that he did last year as a special education teacher, this year as a math teacher, and that's Mr. Ross Benbrook, and doing a fantastic job there. And so our two teachers are assigned to the different strands, and then on one day a week, they push into other classrooms, the non-core classes, like Spanish, but also they do push into computers, science, social studies, and that's really just to do some observation and assist the gen ed teacher, because on the collaboration day each week, all of these programs have collaboration time with special education and general education teachers, and they're able to then share strategies for particular students, what might work better for them in terms of instructional strategies, how to actually do some pre-teaching for students to prepare them for maybe a challenging lesson that's coming up, that the general education teacher isn't going to have the opportunity to keep stopping and giving lots of examples of what it means, this particular concept. And so the special education teachers are able to do that in advance of the lesson, and then also do some follow-up teaching as well to ensure that students understand the, the most salient pieces of the assignment, or of the presentation, or of the activity that the team has decided in advance is relevant for each and every student that's in those programs. So in terms of current and future challenges, we still have a few students that are placed out of district. Again, we don't want to bring students back unless we have the program to meet their needs, and so that's been our challenge, is to try to figure out how we can do that. And we are continuing to lose placement options outside of our district. There are, most all of our partner districts now are unable to take referrals from other districts because their programs are full, or because they've been unable to hire special education teachers, and so they have long-term subs in the classroom, and that's fraught with all kinds of difficulties. So right now, we're actually looking at whether we can and what kind of support would, will be needed to bring back two students that have pretty significant autism and behavioral challenges back to our district in this coming year, and what kind of support they might need, and what kind of training and support our team will need. And I say "our" team, our special education team, our general education team as well. So we're taking a look at doing that as soon as January or February. Again, I've talked about space and about resources. We're always trying to make the best decisions that we can, but again, as people have talked about keeping kids first, is we really have to make sure that we do what the students need. So if bringing them back to our district doesn't really meet their needs, then we'll continue to look for other placement options. And I'm open to any questions that you might have about anything that I've said tonight, or questions that you might have in general about the special education program.
Questions?
I do. Sorry, look, I do. Look, last night, I get to ask a lot of questions if I can hold them together, but, but I really appreciate the clarity of the report. If, if you must know that I have, I have definitely seen the, the shine that has been the reformation or the reformation? Hmm. Reformation? Mm-hmm, the changes in positive way? There we go. For this particular program, because of, you know, from an outside view, people always look at the cost, the expense of this program, and it's not about that. It's about, you know, making sure students are provided the right services and being able to be that resource. So it is, it is a very interesting thing to know that the shortage in teachers in general, and especially in this specialized area, is impacting even our ability to place students for the best, you know, potentially the best option. So I, I am curious how, is that pretty much the sense of everywhere, that they can't provide that service? But you said also that the space isn't there, but, I mean, is it really that situation where the placement is really hit hard because people aren't teaching, or, you know, people just aren't in that field?
It, it's true. I mean, the, the shortages that we've seen in math, science, and special education are hitting everyone in the state. And our part, when I say our partner districts, Albany, Alameda, they've had more students coming into their districts. They've been unable to hire as, as many teachers as they needed to operate the programs for the kids that they have. So again, people are hiring, you know, the teachers that they hope can do the job. They're using teachers who are on short-term teaching permits that might have some experience working with the students. No one's putting together a program without someone that, that can teach the program appropriately and with appropriate certification, but again, how strong is the program? And that, and, and I think my fellow directors, or feel like I do, is we're not going to offer a program to a student that isn't great. And I, I have to tell you, is we have great staff, and frequently, when we go, and we do send staff to observe our students who are in other districts' placements, they'll come back and they'll say, "We can do it better." And I like that attitude, and, and when you talk about our program shining, it's because of the, the teachers that we have and the related service providers. They're the ones who are growing this program with their ideas. They're the ones who are constantly thinking on the cutting edge in terms of how can we do it, how can we do it better? A perfect example is we had a student placed in another district, and we did an assistive technology and a communication assessment on that student and found out that she could benefit from some type of communi, electronic communication device, but we first started her with a communication booklet, and she'd never used one before, and she was already like eight years old, and our speech therapist, who's also our communication expert and assistive technology expert, Alura McGilvery, within an hour had this student using this picture board to communicate to other people in her environment, and her parents were thrilled. And I'm saying, that's a student that we want to bring back to our district, but it takes the commitment of staff to be able to do that, and it also takes a welcoming environment to ensure that those kids are integrated as any other student is, and you can see it when you go into Smiles' classroom, and you can see it when students are walking down the hallway. We've got kids on our campus that I know in the past would not have been there, and they're there now, and they're all being successful in different ways. And again, it, it's really because we've invested in hiring terrific staff members. We've been able to keep most all of them here. We have had some turnover at the high school level, but again, we've been able to each time find some good staff, and we're hopeful that they're growing the model there that's working for the high school students as well. But yeah, we're going to be continued, continuing to be looking at building our own capacity. For me, as a director, working for the district, I believe we have to build our capacity, because if we can't rely on our partner districts and we don't do anything about it other than wait for a program to open, we're going to have kids who aren't being served, and we're going to have kids who aren't in their home community or establishing relationships with their neighbors. And so that's why we're working as hard as we can in that particular area, and we couldn't do it without the leadership at the sites and, and with the full support of our teaching community. So hats off to them.
That's great. Just two more, two more. I recall a few years back when we had some staffing changes to accommodate the learning community, so, and I also remember one grandparent who was at every meeting, and I haven't seen her in a really long time, and I was like, I wonder if that's a ref, I mean, I'm certain it's a reflection of finding trust in, you know, the changes that were being made. So I, I am curious how parents in general are receiving, you know, the changes, I mean, because that's a big change to have had your child placed out and then, you know, being able to bring them back into a different environment, so.
Well, the first two years I was here, we actually did surveys. We did surveys of students, we did surveys of teachers, and we did surveys of parents at the beginning of the year and at the end of the year, in terms of, the questions were related to the services that their students are receiving, what do they think about them, what do they think about the change in the model? Do they think their student is getting enough support, not enough support? And same thing to the teachers, and same thing to the students. And we had, overall, were positive evaluations at the beginning when we started the program, and the second year, they were even more positive. I think I know the, the person that you're referring to, and normally, she's here because I, I take her home, but I didn't offer to do that tonight because I have a medical issue that's going to compromise that, but she still checks in with us.
That's good.
Routinely. And we meet for coffee at least every couple of months. But she's meeting, her and her family are meeting now with the high school staff, which is more appropriate in terms of discussing their concerns about how do you take students who have autism and have significant learning challenges and have academic skills at our second and third grade level? And they're in ninth and 10th grade? How do you make them a part of that classroom and have them feel good about what they're learning and good about what they're doing? And with her input and the input of many of our parents, we've been able to ensure that we keep family first and students first. So I think that's just, we're lucky that we have a community that's invested in telling us what they think is important and then helping us do it. So we do a lot of IEP meetings. And those aren't just business meetings. They're meetings where people actually can share their concerns but also share their ideas. So those, that's really helped us with regards to how we're doing some changes. So we actually have a life skills class program at the high school now for students to learn about how to get prepared for independent living. And there's not just two or three students with IEPs that need that. There are many students who could benefit from that kind of instruction. Students without disabilities. Because a lot of the students just say, well, I'm going to live at home. Well, what happens if that doesn't work out? Or when you, what happens when you get tired of that? Or someone else gets tired of that? You know, where are you going to live then? And how do you find out how to take care of yourself? And how do you find out, you know, where, what places are available and that kind of thing? So we started that this year as well. And that came from input from family members.
That's great. Last question is the fact that I know that it was a pilot year, more or less, for us to work with Head Start. So, and it sounds like there's been tremendous benefit to having them as a partner. And looking forward to how that would, you know, making more, making more use of it, I guess.
Absolutely. You know, we thought a little bit about forming a TK pre-K program. But you only have to spend five minutes in the Head Start classroom to know that you want your three and four-year-olds in that program. They're doing amazing things and they're very rich activities. And because the level of staffing support is so high, the kids are getting what they need. One of the days, I walked out on the side of the playground and I saw one of our three-year-olds' first school experience who had a really difficult transition, going up to other kids with a ball, couldn't say anything to them. And they were interacting back and forth. They were teaching him how to pass the ball back and forth. So you think about, these are typical developing peers working with kids who are lacking a lot of those play skills or language skills. And now they've got 20 teachers around them instead of one or two. And that's the benefit of having kids that have learning challenges with kids who are more typical developing. Doesn't matter that they're coming from homes that have less experiences or homes that are challenged with regards to finances. There are kids that have language, kids that have social interaction skills and kids that are learning pre-academic skills and can share that. So it's a partnership that has worked and we're going to grow it. So this year, they've opened a new class here. And every time they open a new classroom, we get three more seats in that classroom. So that's how we keep the balance of students who have more needs in each classroom. So each time they open another one, we have an opportunity to fill that. I don't know that we'll ever have that many preschool-aged children, but Emeryville can grow as well. And one of the things we want to be able to do is serve every child that comes through that door. So again, one of the things that we could do in the future if we were not able to accommodate in the space in this particular building is we could always expand the TK program to also include preschoolers. That's becoming a more popular model now in some school districts.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry for the long-winded responses. Any other questions?
Yeah, on that last point, you would expand the TK program at the district's elementary, not the preschool program at Head Start?
So our goal is to continue to be solely in partnership with Head Start for the preschoolers. But in the event that we had more students than we could ever possibly serve in this particular setting. So Head Start's vision is to have probably five classrooms in this building. And that would give us a capacity of at least 15 student preschoolers to place. I don't know that we'll ever get close to that. But if we ever did, I was just introducing the idea that you could take a TK classroom and make it a pre-K TK class if you have the space. It's just like where you can serve TKers in a regular kindergarten class. So you have a combination class. So that's something that we could explore. That's been a very viable option. So we're not locked into just one option. We have other options as well. And now that we are continuing to build capacity in that aspect, where we're having our own staff get extended authorizations to their credential, we have two teachers who can actually teach in the preschool, special ed teachers who can teach in the preschool and at the elementary school. And so they're doing a co-teaching model now and they're sharing that assignment. And so we could, we could easily expand that as well.
Right, thanks. It seems from your report that there are more costs coming, likely to come next year, in between more behavioral aids for autistic children coming back from Albany, bigger TK three special ed cohort and possibly two new students at the high school.
It's true. When you start serving students that have more intense needs, you need to provide more services. So far, and probably the rest of this year, we're able to, because of the caseloads that our special education teachers now hold, they're able to provide the necessary support with maybe a behavioral aid with a student that has the most challenging behaviors. And so the cost has actually been less of it serving them in our district than it is serving in another district. Especially if you factor in the cost of transportation for each student. So even if you just factor, for example, I did put dollars and cents in the report, but I didn't report on that here. For example, each preschool child that you place out of district, it's $25,000 for the placement alone. Then you add on additional services. You add on another $15,000 to transport them from home to school. And you're looking at a significant amount of money when we have an amazing program right here, right in the parent's home community. And we have staff that can actually, as I've told you before, think they can do a better job, and they do. But yeah, we have to realize that as we have, as we need to build programs to serve all of our kids, it costs resources. And we have to be prepared to do that when this is the appropriate setting for them.
Okay, how do we, I mean, you indicated you think the students are doing very well and they're all learning. Do we have any sort of metrics to measure how well our students are doing and improving over time?
So we have lots of individual measures for each student because each student is measured individually based on their goals and objectives. I can report to you that there has been no students that have been reported to me that aren't making meaningful educational progress. We've actually had some students who have graduated or exited out of special education. Not a lot of students. And I need to make a point of that is, is that oftentimes people think that students are going to move, come into special education for a year or two and be done. We have a lot of students with a lot of learning challenges. And they have other challenges that they bring with them. And they're not the only students that, students with disabilities that have learning needs. And so we have continued to have students in special education longer than some people might think is the appropriate amount of time. But we have exited or graduated students every year, primarily from speech, but several from special education because of learning disabilities or emotional disorders. But again, some of our students are, you know, three, four, five years below grade level in terms of academics. And it would be hard for those students to succeed without additional support, even though they've learned strategies. So again, that's why it's so important for our general education partners to have continuing professional development on how to differentiate instructions so they can reach all learners and how to scaffold the teaching as well.
Okay.
I did want to say something to you. Sorry, forgot to tell us. We talked at one of the board meetings before about taking a look at whether we could measure progress as a subgroup. And since we've got a new state assessment this year, we'll be able to compare students from this year to next year. And I reported before that the state doesn't actually reduce that, those statistics out to a subgroup because our student population of special education students is too small. But one of the things that Ms. McDonald and Dr. Rubio and I have been talking about is how do we take some of our measures that we're using here in the district and do some comparisons? And one of the things we have to be aware of is if we're going to, is it's a small group of students. So you can't really compare two students with disabilities in third grade to the other 60 students in third grade. It's because of the size. One student can have a significant impact in terms of their performance compared to the other. And the other thing is you have to understand too is that when students start doing really well, they're exited out of special ed. So they know they're on account for that group. And they go back into the Gen Ed group. So those, that's one of the things that we struggle with. But it's definitely something the district needs to do. And we've been talking about how we're going to make those changes so that we can start analyzing as a group. But I think in the absence of that, that's why we've been using surveys with our parents and our students and our teachers to see what their thoughts are. But one of the things that we do weekly, so we're getting weekly feedback on student progress, is the collaboration sessions. So the teachers meet and talk about the students, their needs, how they're progressing, and one of the things, what we need to be doing differently, as well as progress reports and report cards.
Well, yeah, you're sort of going where it was headed, which is that I guess would like to see in future reports, some metrics and data and the CAS tests that are coming out, that's one.
We do need to do that, yeah.
Reclassification into general ed. That's a terrific measure of success of the program.
I can certainly bring the reclassification data. And as I said, we're definitely looking at how we can bring valid data that actually is meaningful and speaks to what it is we're saying it represents. And that's always a challenge in terms of when you're using small groups of students. And we need to do it strategically and planned so that we don't use, misuse the data to say things that aren't necessarily true about it. But yeah, your point's well taken.
You can qualify your end sizes. But I'm impressed that you're surveying the students and the teachers and the parents. And I think that's some, also some data that would be helpful for the board to see to, you know, get the qualitative aspect as well. A key piece of the work does seem to be the collaboration time between special ed and general ed teachers.
It's critical.
Like Ms. Miles and.
I'm going to turn this way and I see a head nodding. And in the past, we've had to catch people, you know, in the hallway, in the lunchroom. But for the last three years, the district has set aside funds. It's about $6,000 a year to pay for a roving sub in order for the teachers at Annie Yates, that's TK through eight, to have a day each week where they rotate on a schedule and are released from their classroom to be able to go and plan with the special education staff members. That means all of the team members that are working with that student. And they generate a collaboration note summary. So we actually can see, and they send it back out to everyone, including myself. So I can see, you know, what were the topics that they're discussing and its instructional strategies as well as behavioral strategies. And then all the adjustments that they're going to make and follow up and that kind of thing in order to continue student success. So that's been, that's critical. You can't have teachers working in silos and not getting back together in terms of how to support the students in their classrooms.
Yeah, so that's, my question is, how is that working? It sounds like you think it's working pretty well.
I review personally.
Is there, do we, do we need to do anything to make that collaboration better? Is the master schedule in place that enables it to happen or?
Those are great questions. I think those are questions I can take back to our department team and make sure that they ask those questions in their collaboration sessions and get some feedback about, is there any way we should be doing it differently? More or less, something like that? We actually this year started out on a rotation. We had so many teachers because we have the expansion in the middle school of teachers, is that we weren't able to meet with all teachers on one day a week. So we have a rotating schedule. So on one week, all the teachers in the A group meet in collaboration. And the next week is the B group of teachers. And it goes back to A in order so that each teacher has set aside specific time for them. That doesn't mean they don't collaborate at other times, send emails, that kind of thing. But it means they have that set aside time. But I think that's a great idea to ask in terms of if there's any suggestions for change. I always ask the special ed team. And so I can't take credit for anything that's changed that's positive because I basically take it back to the team and ask them for their ideas, for their feedback. But I'll certainly ask them to make sure that we're checking in with our Gen Ed partners. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thanks for your time this evening.
Yeah, thank you.
And thanks for the opportunity to do amazing things in our district.
Public comment on this item? Yes, well, you know, you're here.
First of all, I want to just appreciate collaborative staff of Michelle Pesavis and Ms. Ayana Rhodes. We work so well together. We are getting to the point where we finish each other's sentences. We have a very interesting group of kids in our TK program that are making amazing growth. It's a joy to come into that classroom. You must come visit. I had to pull Dr. Rubio in there. They are learning. They are excited. We have parents who were afraid of bringing their kids into a general ed program. And we're at the point now where those parents are constantly expressing their love of the program. They're expressing their love of the support they receive from Ms. Pesavis and Ms. Rhodes and Ms. Steele. It's not just me. I'm just, I happen to be the classroom. And yes, I wouldn't quite use that I demand that those students be in my room. I just basically said that I feel that I have a lot to give to these kids. I've worked with special ed for many years. I don't treat my special ed kids any different than I treat my general ed students. I have high expectations for all my students. I have high expectations for my general ed students. And my parents see that. Right now, we're working with our special ed kids on building independence. And so many of their IEP goals go right along with the independence that we're teaching the TK students. So Ms. Steele is absolutely correct that the IEPs and the collaborative meetings are, and the strategies, we sit and we talk and we collaborate. And often, I'll say, I'm thinking of something and Michelle has already thought of it and she's bringing in a tool, or I find something and I share a tool with her. And so we're constantly collaborating on a regular basis to make it a successful program. So I love it. I go home tired every day. I earn every penny you give me. Not that I wouldn't want some more. Thank you very much. But I earn every penny every day and go home tired every day for my little 17 students that are in TK. And they're amazing.
Thank you. And any other public comment on this item? Okay, we are on to the item 8.2, Superintendent.
Yes, good evening. This is an informational item for the board regarding the Emory Unified Sunshine Proposal for Emory Unified and CSEA for the 2013 to 2016 time period. Ms. Rel is available if you have any questions about this. Ms. Rel, did you want to add anything?
Well, it's just as informational items. As with most contracts, we have salary and benefits are the usual reopeners with one or two additional articles. The district is sunshining to reopen salary. And the CSEA in item 8.3, they're sunshining to negotiate the usual salary benefits. And their additional item will be layoffs. And the first meeting is scheduled for the 16th of this month.
Okay, any questions for Ms. Rel?
Thank you.
Good luck with that. Any public comments? All right, seeing none. You want to take the next item?
Yes, item 8.3 is regarding the sunshine proposal for CSEA and EUSD bargaining for reopeners for 2015 to 2016. Did I read it correctly?
I think you're still up, Ms. Rel.
I think I went a little too quickly there. So 8.3 is CSEA's reopener articles, salary, fringe benefits.
Oh, as opposed to ours, I'm sorry.
And they're bringing, their additional article will be layoffs.
Okay, so 8.2 is the new. Okay, so eight point two is the, the new Oh, the districts. Okay. Any questions on this item?
Similarly, I just wish more successful negotiations could march.
Thank you.
Any public comment? Thank you, Ms. Rell. All right, item eight point four.
Yes. Good evening again. Item eight point four is requesting, as regarding, excuse me, the California School Boards Association, CSBA delegate assembly nominations. The purpose of this annual item is for the board to consider nominating a candidate for the CSBA delegate assembly.
Do we have it? Member Pat, do you have any interest in spending a little time with CSBA?
Oh, I have lots of interest, I have a little time. So.
Member Miriam?
I have to echo Member Pat's concerns.
And Member Ash has run from the room.
She knew it was happening.
She knew it was coming.
For this item. I, I will similarly pass. So, any public comment on this item? Can we nominate a former board member who's teaching in the district? Ms. Miles is resisting. Okay. All right, so I think we will have no nominations
Okay.
from our board. Next item?
Next item is item eight point five, which regards our interview questions for board applicants for our vacancy and to determine what interview questions the board would like to use for the interview.
This is a first reading?
I believe that's correct. Well, well, let me ask, I mean, in our process and timeline, my, my understanding is that the board will make some decisions tonight and edits, and then do they need to come back for a second reading?
My recommend, yeah, my, yeah, my recommendation would be that we work on this tonight, if people have ideas. But we also see what the, the applicants come in
We may have other questions.
and leave ourselves the opportunity to, to edit further.
Yeah.
I mean, we're, I forgot that. We don't have to do, we don't have to finalize this tonight.
Got it.
This is for when our, when our ultimate interview is.
Correct.
In January sometime. Is there any objection to?
No, I just have one question.
Yeah.
Question pertaining to the board or the panel that we'll be interviewing, is there any possibility of gaining melody on that panel?
Oh, come on. I don't.
I mean, that's a question we can get out later. But I thought I'd just throw it out there.
I'm just kidding, I'm totally just kidding, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I believe it has to be the board. But we, I know we would love to have you, but
I can show signs.
Yeah, how, how you score card, your little flash card, ten, nine, eight.
Yeah, I think, I think it's gotta be the board, the shrunken board.
You know, just a suggestion for a question, and, and I don't know where this, maybe it's editing one, but I'm just adding one. And it's part, and maybe it's more philosophical too. I think it's just, if there's a way to, and again, this is not me having a sentence in mind because I don't have one in mind, but if there's a way to, so I'll back up. Sincerely, I do believe that education is a huge component to any child's life. And the, the aspect that it is about social change, I mean, it, it, it either limits or it, you know, it expounds upon their opportunities, the child's opportunities, no matter if they're in general ed or special, you know, whatever. But just to get some philosophical statement about education for a child, you know, just to, you know, to narrow it. I don't know if that makes any sense at all, but I don't know.
I think it's captured a lot in question one, to talk about their, their commitment, you know? But I think, I think what you're saying is be more specific and sort of say, hey, what's your, what's, what's your commitment to education? Or what do you think are the keys of, you know, quality education? Yeah, no, I see where you're going with it. I do think it's captured in one, but I, I hear you wanting a much more specific pin it down.
And you know the reason why? Because I've got stories. I was in Memphis this weekend, whenever I was there, joining my old American. But there were, my uncle's nephew was a teacher in Memphis, in that area. And he spoke to how there was some redistricting or something, and how education turned into like segregation there. It was this weird thing that had shifted, like the resources went that way. And unfortunately, the kids of color or economics went that way. And how, you know, the quality just, you know, it plummeted. But if there's a way to like, you know, get people's ideology, I mean, I think would be helpful. And that, that just kind of resonated with me because I'm like, the new south. You know what I mean? It just became that kind of thought when he spoke to me about that. And, and that's, if there's a way to like, you know, pinpoint, or I'm not saying I wouldn't use specifically, but if there's a way to kind of embrace some, I don't know what that looks like.
Well, I have an idea if I understand you. Are, are you suggesting, what is your commitment to public education and also to the education or support of low economic students? Or is that, or I, I don't know. Does that help? Is that what you're asking?
Does that make sense? You got me.
I, I would, well, we have some time, so I, I would, I, I do kind of see where you're going, but, but I can't articulate it myself. But, but you could, you could, you know, you're still on the board. You have time to, yeah, give, give us, I would say write it up. And, you know, whether that's an edit of number one or an addition. And, and we can look at it in January.
I think it's representative of this district and, you know, the guiding principles. Things that have been in place a long time and, and it hits the social justice aspect of the racial class practice. I mean, it hits those components, but I think I was hit by, from the segregation. The new, you know, education is literally the new way people are dividing and conquering. It's just this weird, you know?
So what, what is your commitment to ensuring? Are most disadvantaged students have, have the same educational opportunities to succeed as, as our most advantaged students?
That's a, that's a try, that's a stab in the dark. You, you're where I'm at. You two got me. But I'll, I'll work on it.
I think, yeah, why not? Yeah. I think that would be good. But I, and maybe there is a race or class specific aspect to it, that you want to be a little more explicit. I think, I think that would be, that would be interesting. I mean, we, we are in a, I mean, the Emeryville is gentrifying, the East Bay is gentrifying, urban areas, the Bay Area is gentrifying. You know, we have Yeah, there is, there is an impact to that. And so there's a question there about, you know, what's your background in, in addressing these issues? And how do, how do you see working on, on, you know, issues of
Equity, right.
Equity. Given our, given our demographic. All right, work on that. Other thoughts, Member Pat's?
Yeah, item nine. I think two things, one, this is an interim appointment. It's not, it's someone who necessarily would be with us for a long time. And two, I think there's a, I, I don't know, Member Miriam, if you've gone to the Masters in Governance Program, but I think it's a little disingenuous to ask somebody if they would commit to it at this point. Because, you know, I don't know that all of us have committed to getting our Masters in Government. I remember Member Dwin was big on this one. So I think we can end it at the first comma, what will you do to learn board policies? You know, and then if they're elected, they can, in learning board policies, they realize we're supposed to get our Masters in Governance. It's recommended, I believe, so. But I think it's, you know, will you commit to doing something that, you know, we all kind of know we're supposed to do?
The, I would question one step further, and we only have so many questions. Do we want one of them to be, what are you gonna do to learn board policies? As opposed to communicating that here are their expectations of a board member?
That was my first thought, but, you know, I think it's good if we know board policies. It's become clear to me that we don't. So it would be nice if our new member did.
Okay.
You know, so I, but if you want to cut it, that makes sense.
Would, would there be other things we could put in that question of learning board policies? Superintendent has ideas of sort of the basic expectations?
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I hadn't thought about it in that term. I'm fine with leaving in board policies, I'm fine with taking it out. It's the second part that gave me pause. The first part, I'm, you know, I think it's
Let's leave it in for now.
Yeah, I mean, if I take a new job, I learn the policies and procedures before I'm out, so. And while I, I agree with what Mr. Donnie, you said earlier, the compensation isn't great, but this is a, we are, we actually do get a check once a month for, I want to say a hundred bucks. So it is technically a job, right?
No worries.
So.
Okay. I, other thoughts? I, I'd like to
Wouldn't mind seeing the converse of five asked, what do you see as the weaknesses of Emory Unified?
Can we ask that in the application or? You have it over there, Josh?
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It is, sorry. I went from seven to five, I'm an odd person.
I know in the past, we've had the employee groups express interest. Some of these are their questions, but I guess we have a CSEA rep and we have a teacher. So to the extent that, that your colleagues are not paying attention, it'd be great if you could, you know, both go back and let us know if you have any suggested additions. Okay, excellent. Let's see if we're, have any other brainstorms up here at the moment? Yeah, I, I'd like to think some more about this personally. So, okay, public comment on this item?
It's more of a clarifying question. Or is this particular interview going to be in the form of a board meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Right? Well, it's how we've always done it.
How is certificated and classified staff represented as part of this, of the interview process? For this particular forum or?
Yeah, I, to my knowledge, and I think since I've been on the board, only Member Pat's has, has been filling a vacancy, but
In the past, we had a forum, and I remembering, I'm thinking that I remembering that wasn't staff included in that interview? Or am I just thinking about superintendent's interviewing?
You're thinking superintendent.
Is that what I'm thinking of?
Because I, I
What?
I would have loved to meet with folks, but yeah, I didn't have any quorum.
What would the harm be? Would there, this, it would seem to be a good way to have some transparency if staff was included in, in the process of a new board member? Would it not?
Did you have a, you mean like a pre-meeting or? Certainly, we want to know what you've got questions.
Will there be opportunities for staff to address interviewing potential board members as to what their philosophies are in reference to teaching, diversity, working with families, and commitment to a board member? Because basically, whether, you know, you're, you're talking about the fact that there's a, not only just a basic commitment to being a board member, the idea that you need to prepare yourself with taking some type of training to understand board policies and understanding the, the problems that we have right now with the Brown Act, understanding and learning. So it just seems that it should be discussed within the questions that you're proposing, that there is definitely a commitment to, to get the, the Masters of Governance if you're committed to doing the job. And then two, that there is some type of, maybe I'm not saying this correctly, that it's clear that it's a commitment that may not just be a Wednesday night meeting, that there are other focuses that you may have to be, such as city council meetings or the way we, that I remember the board, only also attending and making yourself part of the school community, attending functions, attending programs, and, and being part of the community. So how are some of the questions addressing that? Because to teachers, that's what's important.
Yeah.
We used to have board members come to all our stuff. And I haven't seen board members in years. Very few pop in to activities that we have. And so it, to me, an important part of a board member that's going to come in, even if it's only going to be for a year, what their commitment is to being a part of the, the school community that they're going to be servicing. So a, a question that addresses that as well as fighting, educating themselves as to board policies and governance policies. Does that make sense?
Yes, I think it's good.
Okay, yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm making it a point to come to the principal's coffees every month for that reason, because I think it is important that we go to the sites. But Ken reached out to me, Ken Bukowski, reached out to me this weekend. And I, I want to share with you what I responded, which is my only prejudice going into this process is I'd love to see a parent on the board because I think that really does tie you into the school. It gives you a, a connection. And so going into it, I know, I, I hear what you're saying, and I want to say that's the only, you know, bias I have going in, is that would be something I'd love to see because I think the parent community and involvement is really critical in this district and, you know.
Because I think some of that will also bring some cohesiveness to our board. And I, I would like to just share that my experience being on the board, I remember coming into a board that was very contentious, okay? And I do know that the California State School Board Association offers training so that boards learn to work with and through each, each other. So that whoever is going to be coming onto the board also, as well as some of your workshops, learning to work together as a team. Because if the head is not working together, then the body is not going to function as a whole. And we have so many big things coming up. And I would like to see our board come together like it has been in the past so that we feel secure that, you know, we're not divided, that there's no, you know, division. So whoever's going to come in, I, I'm hoping that it's not another divisive entity, but an entity that brings us together. Okay?
Thank you for the suggestion.
Okay.
Yeah, all very good. And I, and I would definitely encourage you, Ms. Miles and Ms. Parham, to send us, you know, email the superintendent, suggest the questions. I think is what we've done in the past. And if you have, you know, you talk to your leaders and, you know, there's some interest in some sort of process, I think, I, I would leave that up to the superintendent. But, you know, I'm perfectly fine with, with the employee groups and the teachers talking to prospective members. All right, so, yeah, appreciate that. We'll revisit this in January. All right, and I think that was our last item, if I can get my agenda to boot up. It's not happening, though. Are we on to report? Board reports or announcements? Board reports or announcements? Yes.
Just a suggestion from the comment from public comment. Sorry about that, okay. From the public comment made by our TK instructor related to safety. It probably, not probably, it makes a lot of sense to considering all of these types of events of a negative fashion. Would be good for the board to review the security and safety policy, you know, from the board level. I would suggest, because I won't be here true enough, but I think it is important to reassure staff and ourselves that there is systems in place or there may need to be things that we need to address. But I think it is important. And today's, that was just, you know, amazing to have people storm a building. Anyway, but I think it is important to... That made the opportunity to look at the policies. So it looks, I mean, it makes a lot of sense to bring those forward and not necessarily... I guess look at the ARs as well, but I would just suggest as a future board meeting to look at those security or safety, I think it's safety policies. And also note that funding, you know, from the budget standpoint will, you know, absolutely be impacted if there's a need to increase security, et cetera, et cetera. But I think it's important to reassure staff, students and families that it is a safe zone. So, I just wanted to echo that.
Okay, other board reports or announcements?
So, yeah, I want to talk about a few things. First and foremost, I think some of the things that were said this evening give me pause. You know, I think you and I have struggled to communicate. I see the world through an education lens as a teacher, and that's sort of my training. And I think about things like that. And I've always presumed you saw things through your legal lens. And so it makes it challenging because for me, it's, you know, pretty simple. You know, you deal with students, you give them clear answers. And my language was inflammatory. And it was based on the presumption that a member of the bar association who'd sat through the same lengthy training on the Brown Act would understand it. But I appreciate that you and Superintendent Affelt came out today and were open and honest that something as simple as don't have three people together behind a closed door who members of an elected or represent a quorum of an elected body was a complicated concept. And, you know, I think I would recommend that you watch the video of us from a year ago. And, you know, there was a couple of attorneys present and they said some really good things on how to avoid Brown Act violations. I remember you talking about it at an open house. You know, what if three members of the board got together and talked about school things under the new interpretation of the Brown Act? That would be a violation. So, tonight was the first night I've heard the term "technical violation." I liked that, you know? So, I'm, you know, I made some presumptions there that you would understand the Brown Act. And, you know, for that, I apologize. I did not realize that that was erroneous on my part. But you did talk about trust. And I think trust is really important. And no, I do not trust you. I find you very disingenuous. I find you to split hairs on the words you choose to use as your legal training would have you do. You know, you got upset at me twice last meeting. Once when I said to the teachers, "No, Annie Yates will not be staying open." And yet, here we are again, another meeting has gone by and we have not had the discussions that you promised. You know? That's a challenge for me. And I do not feel my letter has been addressed. I don't think the board has had a chance to discuss it. And I look forward to that the next meeting. You know, I've filed a Williams, I mean, sorry, a Brown Act complaint, and I look forward to the board addressing it so we can have an actual conversation about it, not just you speak, I wait a couple of hours and then I speak. You know? So, I look forward to that. And I think if you want to build trust in this community, stop having meetings behind closed doors. Let's make the superintendent's committees board committees. Let's subject them to an agenda and open to the public. It resolves this whole problem. And then we can start building trust with the parents again. And we can start building trust back with the community. Because I don't, I don't see it there, you know? I can tell you the number of times we've been lectured here by city council members, former city council members, and members of the community, parents, teachers. It's a challenge to me that these things are not happening. So, I'm all for it. Let's work cooperatively, let's bring back the trust. I think it's a great idea. And that's my goal here. But I don't see any willingness to do that. And so, it's going to stay like it is. You know, we have these meetings and I'm really curious what we're trying to hide by not making them public. And I know I'm not the only one. So, you know, even this evening, give Brian his three minutes. You know, let him have a public comment. It's not a challenging thing. All right, let's go talk about other things.
Other board members, reports or announcements? Okay, I think we're on to...
May I comment on what was just said?
Superintendent Rubio have his three minutes?
You know, I'm happy to listen.
It's very brief. I just would want to say I would really appreciate it if all the board members here on our board would be professional and would not make sarcastic comments that I think would be easily interpreted by most people as attacks because I don't think it's going to help trust or relationships.
Okay, calendar review?
Coming up for us, our next board trustees meeting is December the sixteenth at 6:00 PM. Our winter break, as a reminder for everyone, is December twenty first to January the fourth. And we have a special meeting, I hope, just to ask if you would, all except Member Dyson, sorry, all of you would add to your calendars. January twenty first is our additional special meeting to help us with the process of filling the vacancy on the board. Thank you.
Is that, that's new?
That's new. And thank you for your flexibility and your schedules.
All right, thank you. We're now going to adjourn to closed session at eight nineteen.